There are a lot of your
That was a hundred years ago. Good morning, everybody. December the 12th, 2023, regular meeting of the Commissioners Court Liberty County, Texas. Call the meeting order. It's about nine oh four AM. And uh, if we'll all rise, leave, give us some pledges and I'll give you the case this morning.
Please face the American flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. One of the most liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
If y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you allow us to get up, put our feet on the floor and go business to to help you, to help others, to help us, to help others. Lord, be with us as we go through the, well, the first part of the Advent season. May we all remember the reason for this season. May we all celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Lord, please be with our men and women in uniform that are serving, that won't be home for the holidays. Please be with the first responders as they help others throughout the holidays. And please bring them all safely home to us when their time is finished. Lord, help us to go through the day today in this meeting today. Help us to make the right decisions. Because your knowledge, your wisdom that you pass on to us is final. Lord, please be with each and every one through the, through the Christmas time and through New Year's. Grant traveling mercies to all, please. And please, Lord, forgive us of our times that we fail you. And may we remember to always praise you in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
All righty.
Well, notices and proclamations. We don't have any notices or proclamations this morning. Unless Vanessa has a notice of proclamation. We do have one uh, one uh, public comment portion here today. Ms. Jameson, you're here today to help us out a little bit with the, your co-chair of the Liberty County Historical. Well, you are the chairman of the Historical Commission. And uh, but you're also with the retention plan, the records archives also. And of course, the commission is one of the biggest ones that helped us to get this moving forward with me and her group, the county clerks. So if you would, please come on up and just with us.
I promise I'm not going to take a lot of time. I know how public comments can go on and on and on and roll. So I actually typed it up, Jay, because you know when I'm passionate about something, I get going and you can't shut me up.
I understand.
So, good morning. Four years ago, County Clerk Louie Chambers contacted me as county chair of Liberty County Historical Commission and informed us of the poor condition of many of the older records housed in the courthouse. Invited the commission members to visit and view these records and asked that we could stop on the project. But she had formulated the records archival and retention plan. I formed a committee to meet with Ms. Chambers at the courthouse. We visited many areas of this in the dark recesses of the courthouse, which I didn't know existed until that day. It was a real eye opener. Old records were stored in areas where there was no climate control. They were exposed to humidity, dampness, i.e. roof leaks, critters such as mice, rats, roaches, and other insects. It was a mess. These records were left forgotten to the abuse of nature. Many of the records date back to the courthouse fire in 1872. Some earlier because many people had retrieved their documents and buried them home when they refiled. So we do have a few earlier, earlier records. I have researched historic documents for genealogical purposes for close forty years. I have completed applications for more women than I can count for lineage organizations such as V A R, D R T, colonial banks, and many other organizations praising their ancestors back to the early settlement of our country and our state. More recently, in the last twelve years, in my work as the county chair for the Historical Commission, I've done marker research to establish and document the history of people and places in Liberty County to satisfy the Texas Historical Commission. These histories are not established until you have a document that proves the links between generations, including deeds, marriage records, death records, birth records, probate, school, act records, military records, and on and on. The first place that I go and others go to find these documents is in the county records. These old records tell a story. Some of the old handscribed records are simply beautiful as well. You might say works of art. Records which were recorded in detail, cursive, handwriting, which is becoming a lost art today. You can tell I love old documents. I love the history of our county and of our state and the many pieces of our early history, which are housed in this courthouse for generations of families which will follow us. Our commission consulted with Ms. Chambers to find the best vendor, which record should be restored first, the binding and other support that we might offer. Her plan, its objectives, and the pathway to restore these documents, digitize, bind, and archive without using funds in the county budget, but to attach an archival fee to all documents filed in her office was thoughtfully executed. It has worked seamlessly now for four years. The fully restored documents have so far that have been restored, have been saved for many, many, many years. In August, the Texas Historical Commission contacted me to discuss the plan and its many aspects. I borroweded a copy of the Liberty County Clerk Records and Archive and Retention Plan, in fact, for several years. My liaison with THC Nano Calderon asked if he could highlight this plan and his program at the upcoming convention. I and Mr. Calderon both thought this plan pure genius and a way for many counties in Texas, particularly the more rural counties that have tight budgets to be able to facilitate restoration and retention of their old records. The Liberty County Historical Commission was honored to participate in our small way and to work with the county clerk on our plan to restore and retain our old records. This plan has literally saved many records which otherwise would be lost. I, along with other members of the Liberty County Historical Commission, are here today to encourage the county to continue this important program until all records are saved for future generations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All righty. Number six on the agenda, declare conflicts of interest. Do we have anyone that has a conflict today that didn't declare?
Conflict comment?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I guess most of you know, I'm talking elections here. As most of you know, yesterday was the last day to sign up. So we do have a list of people that are running. They're going to be drawing for their positions on the ballot pretty soon, and we'll be working on that election. I'm also getting calls from the various smaller entities, school districts, city, water districts, even the central appraisal district about the May elections. And so the time to sign up for running for school boards, city councils, all these other districts is rapidly coming up. I think most of them are starting to put their notice that we have openings up. I think January will be the time to sign up for those. Just be aware of the dates and deadlines for these. We're going to try to keep them posted on the website. But if you're interested in the central appraisal district one is a new one. I think like Jay said, it doesn't pay anything, but we will have elected officials on that board for the first time. They will elect all of them. I think three positions countywide. We're going to be on there for this May election. And then they'll be staggered after that. So that's a new thing the legislature passed that's going to be an interesting thing. So we need to get the word out to the public that you can run for central appraisal district now as well as all the other entities I mentioned, everything from, who am I missing? School boards. Pretty much, pretty much any local political subdivision is going to have elections or can have an election starting in May. So we will have our primary elections March fifth and then immediately turn around and have our May elections starting in April, right after that. So it's going to be a very active elective season. I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. If you need a, I don't know, I can tell you who's running if you want to know. I did get that list last night. I don't have all of the presidential ones.
Yeah, go and share it with us. We have time.
Okay, sure. Okay. So uncontested, you can do those first. Those are the easiest, is Martin Davidson for Constable Precinct Three. Bobby Raider for Sheriff uncontested. Robbie Thornton for Constable Precinct Four uncontested. Wes Hinch, Judge of County Court Law Number Two is uncontested. And Matthew Posted, County Attorney, is uncontested. There is a person who signed up for Constable Precinct Two named John Tucker. It would be contested, except my understanding is Les Fossey is going to withdraw today. So John Tucker, even though he's not the current constable, will be running unopposed. The ones that have challengers are David Hunter, Precinct Five. His challenger is Chad Pafford. Richard Brown, Tax Assessor Collector. His challenger is Linda Chapman. David Whitmire, Precinct Three. His challenger is Kevin B J Burton. Gosh, these are all over the place. Zach Cartnus, Constable Precinct Six. His challenger is John Jocelyn. Tammy Bishop, Constable Precinct One. Her challenger is Chance Maddox. Jennifer Bargman, District Attorney. Her challenger is Michelle Marandina. And I'm missing somebody. Who did I miss? Bruce Karbowski and his challenger is Toby Wilford. Did I get everybody?
I believe that's it.
Okay. My understanding from Michael Mark is that there are nobody challenging on the Democratic side. So that's it. That will be our candidates on the ballot for the county.
So probably no robs, the way it looks.
No, not for us, but possibly for, you know, president or some of the others, but not shouldn't be locally.
Okay. Thank you. But when is the closing date? To sign up?
Yesterday. Yesterday.
Yesterday.
So this is done. These are the
Final note.
These are the final ones.
Okay.
So.
All righty.
Less paper. I like that.
Yeah. All right.
Paper's a commodity of the office.
Paper is expensive. Number seven is a consent agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity to look? And if so, do we have any add-ons? Do you have, I didn't get anything, any notifications from anybody?
Make a motion to pass this in the agenda.
Yeah, the motion for Bruce. Second from I think you got your first on that one. On number five, oath and deputations, there's one clarification I'd like to make, and Lee, you already know it, but county clerk threw both for Clarabeth. It's Mancis.
Yes.
Yeah, she used to, she made a full circle back to you. So.
Yeah. She's in Cleveland.
Yeah. So we have a motion, Bruce, saving Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Regular agenda, eight, one, from Mr. Tucker Mueller, our Fire Marshal. Considered an approved order authorizing the sale of fireworks for the Christmas and New Year season beginning December twentieth, twenty-three, three thirty midnight, January the first, twenty twenty-four. Subject to drought conditions and bill. This is our standard.
Standard, yeah.
Standard passage. Basically, the Jim Wilson rule will apply, correct?
No sticks, no fins.
No sticks, no fins. Okay. What say the court?
Motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, two, from Mr. Goddard County Auditor. Consider approve twenty twenty-four budgeted donation to Montgomery County Crime Stoppers for fifteen thousand, and we already have this in the budget. We're just getting these out to folks now. Hopefully, before the end of the year, kind of a Christmas present thing, maybe. I don't know.
And this is not just a Montgomery County. This is Montgomery, Liberty, San Antonio.
Right.
I make motion to approve.
Motion Leon, is that second Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Got motion Leon, saving Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Number eight, three, from Mr. Brown, our Tax Assessor Collector. Consider to approve an overpay refund, the amount of three thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for account six, three, three, zero, zero. Customer is Amy Davis.
Yes, Rick. Thank you. Just like before, it's coming for the court. Can you take over twenty-five hundred dollar refund? In this particular case, this is something they did in closing. Carver held the taxes out and then the third party actually sent in the taxes like the same day posted. So it created a refund. So since it's twenty-five hundred, over twenty-five hundred, it comes through the court. So it's just your standard refund.
Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion Greg, second for Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, brother Rick. We're not through yet. Considering approval, number eight, four, consider approved permission to open a new property account with Prosperity Bank to replace the old property account.
Yeah, I wish I was saying we were getting so much money, we need another account because we filled up the other one, but it's not the case. Unfortunately, we had some fraudulent check activity. We caught them and the bank covered us on it, but put us in a twenty-four hour watch like everything comes through now has to be looked at. So we considered some options. One was positive pay. I sought the recommendation that I think I copied you in on. I also copied in the auditor and the treasurer. And based on the remarks I got back from Ms. Harris, I chose not to go with positive pay because she implied that we possibly would be taking on some responsibility for checks that otherwise the bank would retain. So the other option was to simply, well, not simply, but to change the new property account, which is going to be a little bit of a burden, but it's something that we can clean out. So basically, the bank, in order to do that, had to have it in the minutes that y'all authorized us to create a new property account. It's one of the seven accounts that we have, but it is our busiest one where we do basically all of our tax receipts come in and then they're A C H'd out to the entities. So it's a very active account. And the way this actual fraudulent activity is picked up, we were reconciling the bank statements and we noticed that they took three of our check, you know, the numbers on the bottom of the check that has the routing number and your account number, all those little numbers. But basically, they reproduced that line. They used our check number and everything else was washed off and they created a entire new check. And in this particular case, they wrote three checks to McCoy's. One was in Dallas. We don't know where the other two were, but it amounted to about eighteen hundred dollars altogether. So obviously, somebody got a check from somebody, a refund check, some kind of check, and was able to reproduce it and use our account. But all of our checks had Richard L. Brown, Tax Office, and my signature. Well, none of that was on here, but they had our check number and they had our routing number. So basically, it was a fraudulent deal. So we've been under watch on that now for the last two weeks where they're catching everything. Nothing, something came through in November, but it was one of these other checks. They all happened within two days. So our bookkeeper caught it. No harm, no foul, but now the bank says either you gotta do one or two things. You gotta get a new account or you gotta go to positive pay. So we have opted to go to the new account. Hopefully, that happened again, but my understanding it happened to the county recently, and that's the alternative. They just went into the new account. So we're following that same system.
All right. Good explanation. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second, and David to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, brother Rick.
Thank you, Court. If I could be excused, I have a board meeting in Houston at eleven o'clock, so.
Yes, sir. I believe he can make it just in time.
All right. I think I'll have a good day.
Number eight, five, from Commissioner Karbowski, consider approve E S D number three, reappointing Kathy Warner and Lynn Jones and appointing Paul Marsh to a two-year term effective January first, twenty twenty-four.
Approve.
Yes. Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? No discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Was that an aye, Leon?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number six, I'd like to strike off the agenda.
Okay.
Name changes.
Okay, let's get to that. Six, eight point six is consider and approve E S D number two, reappointing Kelvin Burke and Frederick Lamond, Jr. and appointing Michael Mouton to, to your term effective January first, twenty twenty-four. You have more to reconsider or?
Yes, sir. I do. In my decisions, I did take into consideration the representation of all itself. So I will be taking Michael Mouton off and appointing Charles Kimberlin. But the county attorney has advised me that I need to take this off and put it back on the next agenda.
See what you table?
Let's table this. Yeah.
Make a motion to table.
Motion Bruce to table, second, Leon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion carries. That is a table. You'll have that ready for the next meeting, guys. Okay. Thank you. Uh, number seven for Commissioner Arthur, reconsideration of the appointment of Bill Wingfield to S D number seven, as previously approved in November twenty-eight, twenty-three, the regular meeting Commissioners Court. Greg, y'all just looking at some.
Yeah, we've got some things coming up with this, and I'm gonna make the technical action list at this time.
You will take no action, table. Just take no action.
Take no action. If it looks like we need to reconsider, but right now, no.
Okay.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to take no action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point eight from Ms. Chambers, consider the new fee schedule for the county clerk's office with changes effective January first, twenty-two, twenty-four is mandated by the Texas Legislature. They're a bunch of those guys, don't they?
Yeah, but this is, this is a doozy. You're gonna love this. So effectively, what they're making us do is remove the one dollar fee that we've been collecting for courthouse security. They removed that from the funding section, so we're no longer allowed to collect that one dollar fee. So everything is going down one dollar, the initial filing fee. So we used to file a deed for twenty-six dollars for the first page, four dollars for each additional page. It's now twenty-five dollars and four dollars for each page. A marriage license used to be eighty-two, now it's eighty-one. Gosh, I could go down all of them. The only one that didn't change is birth certificate because we didn't charge it on that. But every other single filing that we do is going to go down four dollars. This is on the rhetoric side only, not on the court case side. The only changes they mandated on the court case side have to do with guardianships and that's a charge that we can apply for background checks for guardianship applications. But the big thing is, is we're going to be getting a lot of overpayments that we're going to have to send back. It's going to be a little bit of a nightmare. So we really need to, please, please help Vanessa get the word out that most of the fees in the clerk's office are going down, decreasing by one dollar January one, and that we need to make sure people send in the right amount of money for their filing, or we won't be able to take it. A lot of people think, oh, this is an extra dollar. Keep it, keep it. But you know, by law, we cannot. So we need to make sure that everyone gives us the right payment and they are going to all change by one dollar January one. So.
Okay.
That's the, that's the big ones.
All righty.
Make a motion to approve that.
Motion from Bruce, second, David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, nine, from Ms. Chambers, consider and approve whether to discontinue the ten dollar archive fee.
Yes, we are shut down at the moment. We can't get P O's. We can't get invoices paid. And the auditor, it took them eight weeks, but they sent us that, and I think I gave you guys a copy of the emails. It just said that we didn't perform a section of the code. I also gave you notes to show that we did perform that section of the code. I don't have any other direction other than that, except that it's not, I mean, we're three months behind and we're collecting money. We're collecting this money from the public to do this project. And if we don't use the money for that project, we can't use it for anything else. So give it back. And Judge, if I may.
May you.
My office, specifically Mr. Thompson, has reached out for a disentailment, third-party opinion from outside counsel, Bickerstaff, Ms. Lori Robinson. I received an email from her yesterday. She has been out of the office for personal matters and has not been able to get us an opinion by today's meeting, but has ensured us that there will be an opinion on the matter by next meeting. So county attorney's office would ask to dis table until we can receive that, that opinion.
It's a good idea.
I'm still moving. Take a look. Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to table. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, ten, from Commissioner Whitmire. Consider approve interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct Three and City of Plum Grove to provide safe and well-maintained public roadways, including city streets, for the benefit of its citizens and a reduced expense by avoiding cost duplication of manpower, equipment, and other resources. This is your standard interlocal agreement, David. Okay?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Leon. I'll give you the second on that, Bruce. Any further discussion? All vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, this is our, well, our usual, where we the taxing entities are the ones that get the votes together to place people on the Central Appraisal District Board, not the A R B, not the Appraisal Review Board. This is the big board, okay? The A R B members are appointed by the presiding administrative judge for Liberty County, which I think this time was Judge Kane. So the A R B is not inclusive in this. This is just the Board of Directors for the Central Appraisal District. And the county has And the county has. One thousand three hundred ninety-three votes, that's what we get because we hold the biggest, I guess, uh, brother Rick left already, but.
Judge, one hundred and?
One thousand three hundred and ninety-three votes. And just to kind of give you a quick breakdown, Bruce, just for, those people are gonna ask, uh. City of, uh, well, the Cleveland ISD has eleven hundred and thirty-six votes. The, uh, Dayton ISD has nine hundred and ninety-four votes. Devers ISD has sixty votes, it's all based on what your tax levy is, okay? Uh, when you get that look at the cities, uh, City of Devers has two, two votes, okay? Uh, City of Liberty has a hundred and twenty-six, you'd think they have more than that, they don't, you know? Anyway, we have. The task of placing members on the board, the CAD board. To, uh, fill out the five positions.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
These are the ones that are gonna be up for election, correct?
Yeah, now.
But.
Let's, we have to get past this first.
Well, wait, wait, but there's a, there's a, there is a caveat. If nobody signs up to run for that position, then the county's appointee becomes the person in that position, is what I understand from Atlanta.
Yeah, now this, these five members, there's currently five board members, period. And this will be in effect for one year, okay, so it's from January first, all the way to December thirty-first. Next year, the, the three that decide to run in a county-wide effort, that's the way I look at it. And by the way, the job didn't pay anything, and by the way, it's four hundred dollar filing fee, so I'm just waiting to see. What anybody's, uh, notion is to, to run. And same token, what platform are you gonna run on, uh? Sheriff, I can't see that one to be very positive, but the other side of it is. That will bring the total number up to eight members next year, January first. Except, the county tax assessor collector becomes a voting member. Also, under the state, the new law, so now we'll have nine members, so there won't be any. Uh, stalemate as far as votes with nine members, it's either gonna be for or against, okay? So. Our members that we, uh, we approve. Uh, Liberty County has. Uh, eight hundred and thirty, well, thirteen hundred and ninety-three votes, it takes eight hundred and thirty-four to secure a position on the board. And our votes go toward Mark Showlander with eight hundred and thirty-five, and that left us a balance of two hundred and seventy-nine votes. Left over, uh, well, actually. Five hundred and fifty-nine votes left over, then we split down to two hundred and seventy-nine votes. Uh, two seventy-nine for Mark Harden, and then also, uh. You give representation over at Pardon Side, Charles Bold's gets two hundred and seventy-nine, so there's just three breaks that we have in there. The hundred and thirty-five for Liberty County. Uh, itself, and then we toss the votes over toward. Uh, Liberty, Liberty ISD, and then Harden and Harden ISD, because remember this, Cleveland has votes, okay? And they're gonna be voting for someone from Cleveland, and you have, um. Dayton, and they, they're gonna be voting for someone from Dayton.
What about our school board, Jake?
Uh, school board? I don't know who else on there, Leon, that, uh, I know right now Josh, uh. Josh Day is on the school board, he'll probably be the representative for, for the City of Dayton and Dayton ISD. Okay, and, um, the way I understand it is pretty much, uh, Jimmy Rollins will probably be. The representative for Cleveland ISD and, and the City of Cleveland. And I wouldn't be surprised if Parknitt didn't throw in too, so. We're just trying to get equal representation, and that's why we, we broke down the votes. But this is just for a year, next year we get to do it again, okay? Maybe add three more members plus the, uh, tax assessor collector, so I'm asking you.
But my understanding is if nobody signs up to run, then the county will be the one that appoints those. Positions, if they, if nobody runs for them, so.
I'm pretty sure somebody's gonna run, but you know, then again.
Or your best.
It doesn't pay anything and you got a four dollar filing fee, and how are you gonna, uh, commit your agenda for running? I'll lower your taxes, okay?
Make a motion to approve.
All righty.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, uh, consider and approve the following appointees to the Chambers Liberty County's Navigation District. Uh, Leon Blackwelder is our representative that's been there for one term, and he, I talked to him, and he said he would like to serve another term. So I wrote his name in, um. Brady Hanson would be the representative that's chosen between Chambers and Liberty Counties. Now, every four years, I get the opportunity to appoint somebody, or we do. And then every four years, or other, other four years, Judge Sylvia in his court gets the opportunity. That, this time around, uh, Frank Jordan already serves, he's in, in midterm of his service. And we're gonna reappoint Leon Blackwelder and then appoint Brady Hanson as our representative. To the, uh, Chambers Liberty County's Navigation District, but here's the clincher, you have to live in the district. And, uh, we try to look for somebody that has some, uh, farming knowledge, some, uh. Uh, cattle business knowledge, some business or knowledge of the river and also the bay. Because a lot of this, uh, that they work on with this district involves all of that, and Brady lives down in Moss Bluff. Uh, almost on the river, so that was my, my, uh, appointment that for y'all to consider.
Make a motion we approve.
Thanks.
Motion Leon, second from Greg, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Number thirteen, or eight thirteen, is considering approve Neil Thornton as the Liberty County Commissioners' Court. Representative for the Liberty County TERS, number one, effective this date. This TERS is located in the Gulf Inland area of Liberty County. And Leon, you remember back in what, twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
We formed that TERS.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh. There are, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I believe. Seven members on the board, on that TERS board, majority of them are pretty well stacked up. As Dayton representatives, because the TERS is in Gulf Inland, which is located in the rail yard area. And that is just now starting to take off. Where they will be having some projects that need scrutiny, and, uh. With someone that, uh, I consider to be very knowledgeable, uh, as Neil has served on the City Council for Liberty. And also, uh, with our, uh. Uh, Housing Authority Board, when we first came into office back in twenty fifteen, when we had some, uh. Some things to look at, and he did a great job, um. That would be, there's, there's no term on this, just by the way. It, uh, till somebody hollers calf rope, and then you, you start over. But basically, we need someone on there that will look out for the benefit of Liberty County itself, and so.
I make motion we approve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Motion Leon, uh, second from David, further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Number, uh, eight fourteen from Ms. McMillan, Penny, come on up. Consider approve the jail commissary rate increases effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, the list is attached in the packet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um. I can't, not have this sheet moving.
Yes.
We, um, we were approached by our, our medical department at the Liberty County Jail, um, and they informed us that, um. You know, there aren't any other facilities in the surrounding areas. And they looked at our charges compared to the other level of charges, commentary charges. In the surrounding counties' facilities, and noticed that, you know, we were below those rates. And we were trying to see if we can raise those rates up to comparable, um, charges with our surrounding counties and. Our, we, we did, um, sheriff did, uh, review the charges. Uh, for submission for the court, and we're just trying to get our commissary rate charges up for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. To, you know, match the surrounding facilities in our area. So that's what we're, you know, we were, we were below, you know, we were, uh, when we first did it.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just trying to get those rights up.
Any comments here?
Yes, sir, that's what inmates would pay.
Yeah. Move or approve, second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fifteen from Ms. Holliday, uh, consider and approve the invoice to LJA Engineering in the amount of. Two thousand dollars for engineering services for the Seaton Hardin wastewater project. Invoice has been signed by Mayor Johnson and will be paid using ARPA funds. Bruce, self-explanatory.
Pretty self-explanatory, sir.
All right.
Second.
Motion Greg, second from David to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Thank you.
That's the best one you've had all year. Bruce, I understand that they started clearing, uh, a site off for the new well in.
Yes.
In Desa?
It, uh.
Or hole, rather.
Coming right along.
Good, that's good to see these projects moving forward. Uh, number eight sixteen from Mr. C, consider approve purchase of twenty twenty-four Tahoe for. Forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, that's the Sheriff's Association of Texas contract number. Twenty-two, zero, three, one, zero, zero. Eight R, and upfitting for eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. That's the buyboard contract number six-nine-eight-dash-two-three for Parkway Chevrolet. I almost want to start singing the commercial, right? Parkway Chevrolet for the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, that's all Parkway, it's sixty-six thousand, nine twenty-five, twenty bucks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion David, second from Greg, further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight seventeen from Mr. C, consider and award RFP number twenty-three dash twenty. Construction manager at risk for the Northwest Annex, this is the annex in Colony Ridge. I had a question from one of my constables the other day, when are we gonna get an office in Colony Ridge? And I said, soon, we turned dirt and ten months later, that's pretty soon to me, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Is it risk or risch?
Risk.
Or ask. Should be okay.
The county's favor.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Talk about it.
Go ahead.
We had two proposers, two fresh, we kind of, these crane and, uh, white construction. Evaluation committee was Judge Knight, David Douglas, myself. Evaluated them. There was one little point in there on the, uh. On their fees, how we're gonna help them evaluate on the tax sale. One way we did it, uh, White was a little more, and the other way Crane was a little bit more. Both of them seem to be really good companies, uh, the, the committee recommends White. Uh, I would like to, we wait another week, clarify one other thing with Groundworks, since we have just a week, do it next Tuesday, and we've been definitely awarded to. Just wanna make sure, since it's ARPA funds, that we're doing here now the evaluation.
So you want to?
You're right.
Next Tuesday.
They have it till next Tuesday. I'm with you on that. And I'm moving with you.
Okay, got a motion from Greg. Second.
Great second.
Bruce did, okay, got a motion Greg, second from Bruce to table this till next week, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, there's no executive session today, so we're looking for an adjournment motion.
Adjourned.
Well, I believe he's gonna get Bruce, second from David, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.